Good evening. I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That will take us to our state award winners and Dr. Small.
Thank you, Mr. Eric Winkowski, Director of Athletics and Activities. Would you join us and start the introduction of some of our wonderful students that are here tonight?
Thank you. Dr. -- Board of Education and Dr. Small, thank you for taking some time to honor some talented students. Tonight we have our HOSA students with us tonight. Also helping me tonight and support and honor their students are Fremd Principal Mark Langer, Conan Principal Julie Novak, and Assistant Principal Jeanette Ardell, and Hoffman Estates Principal Mike Alther, and Assistant Principal Tom Mokon. Students, as your coach or sponsor introduces you, please step forward to the podium here to receive your award. Additionally, any family members that are here today, please stand and be recognized as your student is initially introduced. So we'll get started with Fremd High School. Fremd High School Hostess Sponsor is Julia Morgan. Julia Morgan is in her third year as a Fremd Science Department -- member of the Fremd Science Department, and is in her second year as a Hostess Sponsor. Julia.
Hello, and thank you so much for having us tonight. It is with great honor that I am here to present you ten Fremd High School students that have shown outstanding dedication to continuous learning and a yearning for excellence in their endeavor to compete at HOSA State and an upcoming HOSA International Competition in June. I'd first like to introduce Fremd's Mental Health Promotion Team, who placed first in HOSA State. This team includes five freshmen. Neethi Garish, with her parents Garish and Priyam. Sumedha Rayo, with her parent Supriya. Ria Pukreja, with her parents Deepthi and Naveen. We have Marine Gafur, with her parent Balgisha. And lastly Sahasra Balina, with her parent Sumatha. This team will be competing in Internationals in June. Congratulations and good luck. Secondly, I would like to introduce Fremd's Community Awareness Team, who also placed first in HOSA State. This team includes four sophomores. Shriyapulani, with her parents Nithya and Sentil. Spadnamane, with her parents Raji and Vamsi. Hannah Kim, with her parents Justin and Jayee. And Trisha Karanjakar, with her parents Golri and Kedar. This team will also be representing Fremd at Internationals in June. Congratulations and good luck. To conclude, I would like to say what an honor it has been to be able to work with such determined individuals who are following their health science passion. I wish you nothing but the best in your upcoming international competitions, and I'm so proud of your accomplishments. Congratulations, and again, thank you.
Onto Conan High School. Vicki Degaya. Vicki Degaya is in her 11th year of teaching the Certified Nursing Assistant Program in District 211. Vicki is a certified nurse, and she also brings a real-world nursing experience to her students in her classroom and in the HOSA Club. Vicki?
I'm here to present HOSA Illinois State Champions from Conan High School. Our first champion team is in the category of public health. Heart disease is happening to younger adults at a greater frequency. Heart disease can happen at any age. This team did the best presentation in determining how young adults can prevent the development of cardiovascular conditions using real-life experiences and educate the public about a heart-healthy lifestyle for life. These juniors have common interests in healthcare. They aspire to have careers in cardiology, neurology, and pediatrics. I'm also proud to present the future leaders of our HOSA Club to mentor young and new members. Here is -- here with her parents Sri Ram, Kay, and Arthi is Aditi Sri Ram. Here with her parents Juanjay and Hannah is June Lee. Here with her parents Joel Raju and Hepsi is Janita Joel Raj. Here with her father Engelberg is Maria Alessandra Remando. Our next champion is in the category of health informatics. Health informatics provide members with the opportunity to gain knowledge and skills regarding the management of health information and the assimilation of technology in healthcare. Sruthi proved to be a fierce competitor in this category. She aspires to be a bioengineer or computer science major, and is currently taking five AP classes in her final year of high school. She likes tennis and badminton. Here with her mother, Amrutha, is Sruthi Sundar. Just wanted to thank Dr. Small and Mrs. Novak and the Board and everybody else that have supported our program. We are excited to compete again next year. Thank you.
And our final sponsor is from Hoffman Estates is Luke Yannell. Luke Yannell is in his 15th year as a member of the Hoffman Estates Social Studies Department. This is Luke's first year as HOSA Sponsor, but he's also served as the head basketball -- boys' basketball coach at Hoffman Estates, and is also the voice of Hoffman Estates Football. So you probably hear him on Friday nights.
Fellow community members, our distinguished Board, and my personal favorite Superintendent of the State, Dr. Small. It is my distinct honor and privilege to be here to recognize our first-place winners in the HOSA State Competition. Fortunately, but also unfortunately, most of our members are in California right now for the Business Professionals of America Competition. So those will be recognized here as in parliamentary procedures. First place, Dia Patel, Isha Submaranian, Aurya Shaw, Manan Patel, Nathaniel Hamm, and Hatarth Dalakia. With us today is Sri Patel, who won first place in job-seeking skills, with her parents Karul and Pragnesh. Sri's commitment to personal excellence as well as academic excellence has been rewarded, and we are exceptionally proud of her at Hoffman Estates. Go Hawks!
Thank you to our wonderful students, our staff, and thank you to all the parents for everything that you do to support your children at home and at school. We will be taking pictures of the kids, but we have two quick pieces of business that we have to complete before we take the pictures. So just be patient for a couple more minutes. The next item on the agenda is the minutes of the regular meeting of April 13th, 2023, be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Epstein.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the School Board Election Official Results. The recommended action is that the attached official canvass results of the Cook County Clerk's Office for the April 4th, 2023 School Board Election of Township High School District 211, declaring Michelle Barron, Kimberly Cavill, Peter R. Dombrowski, and Stephen Rosenbloom duly-elected members of the Board of Education of Township High School District 211, be accepted as presented, and further that the official canvass results be entered into the minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. The last item of this agenda is that this is the final meeting of the existing Board of Education. The recommended action is that this meeting of the Board of Education adjourn sine die, and I would ask for a voice vote. Those in favor of adjourning the meeting, please signify by saying yes or aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries, and this meeting then is adjourned at 7:40 PM. We will now begin the organizational meeting of the Board of Education of Township High School District 211. Our first action is the appointment of President Pro Tempore. Unless there are any other considerations, as the retiring president, I will act as President Pro Tempore this evening. I welcome everyone to the organizational meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education. I ask all present to value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and to be respectful of all. As a reminder, our meeting will be videotaped. I call the organizational meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. The next item is the appointment of Secretary Pro Tempore. I will ask the recording secretary, Mary Sue Kason, seated over here, to act as the Secretary Pro Tempore to conduct roll calls during the election of officers. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Barron.
Here.
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
All right, would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Oath of Office. Dr. Small, please introduce Regional Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Kevin Yauch, who will administer the oath of office to the new Board of Education members. Will the four newly-elected Board members please stand in front of the board table? At this time, the oath of office will be administered to our newly-elected and reelected District 211 Board of Education members as required by the Illinois General Assembly. To perform this duty -- excuse me, I would like to welcome Dr. Kevin Yauch, Regional Superintendent of Schools for North Cook ISC, Regional Office of Education Number Five. Dr. Yauch has been a resident of District 211 for 45 years, graduating from Palatine High School in 1986. Both of his sons are graduates of Fremd High School in 2014 and 2016. He holds an Associate's Degree from Harper College, a Bachelor's from National Lewis University, a Master's in Education Administration, and a subsequent doctorate from Northern Illinois University. He's been a teacher, assistant principal -- principal in the neighboring District of 15, and also served as a principal and the superintendent in Evoqua School District 37. He immensely enjoys serving students, teachers, and administrators, and we truly enjoy his leadership within our region. It is my pleasure to welcome him back to District 211. I can't see him.
I'm here. I would like to thank the Board and Dr. Small and the administrative team for inviting me here today for this event, and I'd like to thank you for choosing to run and serve in this capacity in our community. So thank you very much. As Regional Superintendent of Schools, it is truly my privilege to administer the oath of office to you. I'll read each section, and please answer "I do" after each one. "I, Michelle Barron, Kimberly Cavill, Peter Dombrowski, Stephen Rosenbloom, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Township High School District 211 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow Board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a Board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public Board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the Board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district. I shall foster with the Board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Township High School District 211. I shall assist in establishing a structure and an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for Township High School District 211. I shall strive to work together with the District Superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the Board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Again, congratulations, and thank you very much for your service."
Congratulations, Kim Cavill, Peter Dombrowski, Stephen Rosenbloom, on your reelection, and a warm and wonderful welcome to Michelle Barron's serving on our Board. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you. Then the next item on the agenda is the election of the Board President. The procedures for this process have been posted on the agenda. We will first take nominations. If there is more than one nomination, we will vote on each nominee in the order they were nominated. Once one nominee has a majority of the votes, then that nominee will be declared the president, and the voting will stop. Are there any nominations for Board President?
I nominate to McGowan. I nominate Mr. McGowan.
Okay, well, you guys were really close right there. Let me have an impartial person. Dr. Kevin, could you -- Yauch, did you hear which one came first?
I apologize.
Okay. All right. I suggest we just go in alphabetical order then. Okay. Alphabetical order it is. Mr. Rosenbloom, you are nominating?
I'm nominating Anna Klimkowitz for the Board President.
Okay, Anna Klimkowitz has been nominated for Board President. And Mr. Dombrowski?
I nominate Mr. McGowan.
Okay. Mr. McGowan has been nominated for Board President. Are there any further nominations for Board President?
I would also like to nominate Stephen Rosenbloom for Board President.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for Board President?
I would like to nominate Mr. McGowan.
He's already been nominated. We'll vote on each one separately. All right. Any other nominations for Board President? Okay, if there are no further nominations, therefore the nominations of Board President are closed. All right. The following people were nominated in the order for Board President. Anna Klimkowitz, Tim McGowan, Stephen Rosenbloom. I will ask for a motion of each nominee in the order they were nominated until one person receives the majority of the votes for the roll call. Once someone receives the majority of the votes, that person will be declared the president, and the voting will end for that office. Anna Klimkowitz was nominated for President. Can I have a motion that Anna Klimkowitz be President?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
No.
Mr. Bradley.
No.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. The motion carries, and Anna Klimkowitz is the President.
Madam President, I was under pressure it was just a roll call. I didn't know that was the actual vote. Excuse me.
That was the vote.
I thought it was ordered a roll call.
The roll call is voting on the nomination, yes.
Can I change my vote to no, please, Madam President?
The motion still passes due to majority of the votes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next is the election of the Board Vice President. The procedures for this process are the same as the election of the President. We will take first nominations. If there is more than one nomination, we will vote on each nominee in the order they were nominated. Once one nominee has a majority of the votes, then that nominee will be the Vice President, and the voting will stop. Are there nominations for Vice President?
Stephen Rosenbloom.
Are there any other nominations for Board Vice President? Are there any other nominations for Board Vice President? Okay, there are no further nominations, therefore the nominations for the Board Vice President are closed. Stephen Rosenbloom being the only nominee for the Board Vice President, I hereby declare Stephen Rosenbloom elected as Board Vice President by acclamation. Secretary Pro Tem, please record this. Thank you. The next is the election of the Board Secretary. The procedure for this process are the same as the election of the Vice President. We will take first -- we will first take nominations. If there is more than one nomination, we will vote on each nominee in the order they were nominated. Once one nominee has a majority of votes, then the nominee will be the secretary, and the voting will stop. Are there any nominations for Board Secretary?
Kim Cavill.
Kim Cavill has been nominated for Board Secretary. Are there any other nominations for Board Secretary? Are there any other nominations for Board Secretary? Are there any other nominations for Board Secretary? There are no further nominations, therefore nominations for Board Secretary are closed. Kimberly Cavill being the only nominee for Board Secretary, I hereby declare Kimberly Cavill elected as Board Secretary by acclamation. Secretary Pro Tem, please record this. Thank you. All right. Then that takes us to -- the next item is the adoption of policies of preceding Board of Education. The recommended action is that the newly-formed Board of Education adopt and be guided in operation by the existing policies and adopted by the previous Board until changed or amended by this Board. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Ms. Barron.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. The next item on the agenda is to establish the time, place, and date of regular Board of Education meetings. This is informational, and you should have that in front of you in the Board information. Is there any discussion in regards to it? Okay. If not, the next item on the agenda is Board Liaisons. This is informational regarding the Board members who serve as liaisons. Is there any discussion? You should have the list, and please get that back to Dr. Small then by -- what did we have, the fourth?
Next week, and I will put out another reminder via email.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Board of Education Protocols. This is an informational item regarding the Board Protocols. They are for our review tonight prior to the consideration of their adoption by the newly-formed Board at a future meeting. Is there any discussion at this time? Okay, if not, then our next item on the agenda is Public Comments. And we do have a few individuals signed up. The Board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public Board meeting and not a dialogue, so the Board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, this Board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium, so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to five minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the Superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper. There will be five minutes allotted for public comment tonight. We have four individuals who had signed up. The first speaker is Tim Smalley, followed by Michael Briskar. Mr. Smalley?
Hello to my neighbors and to the distinguished Board. I am a -- I do live in Palatine, and I was -- I grew up in Schaumburg, went to Schaumburg High School. And what I wanted to address tonight were my thoughts about moving forward, the education within middle school and high school. Being a computer person myself, I value -- I actually test software, so it's very important for me to have the correct testing done. And as that, I've learned a lot about reason and logic, and I think that schools need to have more of that. If I would -- Doc, if I were to say what the outcome that I would like for my children from a middle school and high school education, basically three things I would like to see happen. One, that the children learn facts, such as math, history, geography, English, that they learn these things astor in their mind for later. The second thing would be how to think, reason, logic, what logical fallacies are so we could avoid them, critical thinking, and science. So we take the knowledge and we use science and such to figure out, is it true, is it not true, and we can move on from there. And the third thing are basic skills to get by in life, such as how to deal with a bank account, write a check, home economics, human sexuality, PE, government, art, that sort of thing, so that these people who are growing into adulthood can survive out there because it is a very difficult world. Some of the arguments and opinions that I've talked about, of course, are I think that the school board should always consider best practices, evidence, reason, like I said, critical thinking, when you discuss what sort of policies to have for our children. There are two main -- two dividing topics, I believe, in the last election, and they were banning books and the sex education classes. I was very dismayed to see that some churches, one in particular, for instance, has been pushing their religion into the school election. For instance, New Hope Community Church has on their website that they actually say, "You can..." Uh, for instance, New Hope Community Church has on their website that they actually say, "You can vote for only these two people." And that's Mr. Hagie and Dargus, I believe, let me see, excuse me, Mark Kramer and Peter Dombrowski. So this church is breaking the Johnson Amendment by not only telling you what positions that they follow, but more importantly, they're breaking the Johnson Amendment by telling you who to vote for. And hopefully they will lose their tax exemption very soon. Just to finish my thoughts, as you decide what is best for our children, please use reason, please use well-reasoned arguments. Um, you certainly should use reasoned opinions, but opinions that are based in someone's religion...
You have one minute remaining.
I don't think has any place. Now, if someone were to prove, for instance, that their religion is real, that their God is real, if they can actually prove that, then absolutely. If we can prove that there is a God, then let's bring it in to the conversation because that would be part of reality. But at this point, religion is literally just mythology. And we could have a discussion about that, and if I'm wrong, you can tell me why I'm wrong. But again, I think it's very important that we follow reason and discussion, compassion, science, critical thinking when making decisions about our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Michael Briskar, followed by Kathy Reesberg.
Distinguished Board, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Michael Brisker. My wife and I are proud residents of District 211. I'm here speak, I'm speaking tonight to make sure the board and as many people as possible are aware that another huge apartment complex is in the works in Schaumburg, and that like the, the other enormous developments along Algonquin Road, it is zoned to send the kids who've moved there to Fremd. The property I refer to is the Loper Farm. It's thirty-five acres in size and is just we- west of Meacham. The buyer plans to build three hundred and fifty-seven rental units. This will be in addition to the three hundred and seventy-three apartments that are now being finished and rented at the Quinn. And of course, this is in addition to the hundreds of townhomes and two hundred and sixty rental apartments being built at the Veridian. And you certainly know about the three huge existing complexes, the Treehouse, International Village, Lakes of Schaumburg, with over twelve hundred combined rental units. What you may not be aware of is that each and every one of these developments is located within the borders of Schaumburg, advertises itself as offering all that Schaumburg has to offer, but highlights the fact that these properties are zoned to send their kids to schools in Palatine and Rolling Meadows. I will quote just one line from the Veridian website, quote, "The Riv- Ver- the, the Veridian is part of the highly acclaimed Fremd High School District Number 211," close quote. By now, the pattern should be crystal clear. These huge development corporations take advantage of the fact that Fremd and its high-quality feeder schools are close to the border of Schaumburg. Developers buy Schaumburg land, receive relatively easy approval of zoning changes to allow for huge multi-unit projects, then lure tenants there with the claim that they can enjoy the fun and amenities that come from living in Schaumburg while also being able to send their kids to one of the best schools in the state, Fremd. How can you, as the school board, plan for such a large influx of students with no end in sight to the development of more and bigger apartment buildings? Do you plan to enlarge schools to accommodate the hundreds and soon thousand-plus kids who'll be coming, coming to your schools from Schaumburg? Or will your classroom size just keep getting bigger and bigger to the detriment of existing students? What other adverse impacts will there be to the quality of education at Fremd if the number of students continues to rise without a corresponding increase in revenue? I assume I'm no different than other property owners in this room when it comes to real estate taxes. I'm not happy about how high they are, how much I pay, but I love where I live, so I suck it up and pay. Last year, sixty-five percent of my taxes went to Districts Fifteen and Two, and Two Eleven. Compare that to the fraction paid by the corporate landlord owners of these properties. These companies are sending kids to your schools by the hundreds. There are now almost seven hundred kids in this district with a Schaumburg multi-unit address. I'm certainly not suggesting that these Schaumburg kids don't have the right to attend whatever schools are in their district or that their parents are doing anything wrong. But I am saying that the developers and the landlord owners have found a way to manipulate the system to the detriment of the kids and the schools. The end result is that the landlords make a fortune by being allowed to build such dense housing while paying only a relatively low amount in taxes to our schools. Likewise, there are an ever-increasing, albeit unknown, number of students to plan and pay for in years to come. What I'm asking of everyone here is to be aware of what is happening in surrounding neighborhoods...
You have one minute remaining.
...and how these waves of development will affect us in our schools. I'm also asking that you speak up and make your concerns known to our local representatives in Palatine and Rolling Meadows. Likewise, please reach out to the Schaumburg mayor and trustees and voice your concerns to them. They are the ones who will decide if the Loper property can be developed in this manner. Though Schaumburg will tell you there is no official proposal and that is technically correct, make no mistake, this development is in the works. As an adjacent neighbor, I was shown the renderings and told the details about the number of units planned. To reiterate, what I'm asking of you is to be aware that there likely will be hundreds more kids from Schaumburg rental properties filling your classrooms in the near future, and to make your voices heard with those people who have the authority to stop the next huge development, the Loper Farm, before it's too late.
Thank you. Kathy Reesberg, followed by Cook County Commissioner Kevin Morrison.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Reesberg and is a taxpayer for forty-five years in this community. I want to thank again all the students, staff, school board, and community members here in District 211 who have stood together during these challenging past few years to show their support and respect for all students, despite the sometimes extreme and often hate-filled rhetoric that has been shared by those who hope to fuel the fires of politically motivated culture wars that have emerged at these monthly D- 211 school board meetings and school board meetings all across America. And I want to express my gratitude to you, the District 211 Board, for your commitment to do what it takes to ensure that the basic human right of all of us, including students and all staff, the right to live, is protected by the well-thought-out policies you have put in place to maximize the safety and well-being of all students and all staff who enter this building each day. This right to live is what we, the majority of people in this community, do value as the most basic and essential parental right. The right of every parent to have their child be alive at the end of the school day and also not suffer life-altering gun violence wounds as a result of coming to school. Yet we know that some folks continue to unwittingly be conned and manipulated by dark money-funded politicians, to be the politicians angry and divisive local foot soldiers in the culture wars. What these folks could do instead is to make a positive difference for our students by initiating a conversation with other community members, our local police department, school administrators, and school counselors to talk about the steps that can be taken to help prevent incidents of school gun violence. Steps such as securing all guns with gun locks, learning about domestic violence and its connection to gun violence, and addressing any mental health, alcohol, and other drug use, or in-school, online bullying issues their child might be experiencing. Unfortunately, these folks often show up here at these District Two Board, District 211 Board meetings not to support our students or the work you do as, as a school board, but simply to spread disinformation and fear by promoting the man- banning of books, protesting our students' freedom to learn, their freedom to read, and their freedom of gender identity and gender expression. However, it's so good to know that we do share a common vision that by working together, we can create a safer community for all families and all students. And we realize we have not only the right to expect our children and school staff to be alive at the end of the school day, we also have the undeniable responsibility as parents and grandparents to play our part by directly working with you, the District 211 Board, our police department, mental health experts, and our local domestic violence advocacy organization, Wings Program Inc., to learn as much as we can about our responsibility to help prevent gun violence in our community and in our schools. I thank you and welcome to our new board slate.
Thank you. Cook County Commissioner Kevin Morrison?
Thank you, President Klimkowitz and fellow board members. It's an honor to be with you all today. Uh, I'm Kevin Morrison. I represent the Fifteenth District on the county board, representing the bulk of the northwest suburbs. Proud, uh, 211 graduate myself. I graduated from Conan High School and most definitely would not be county commissioner today without the high-quality education I received at Conan. Uh, I wanna, uh, first congratulate, uh, the newly re-elected board members, uh, as well as the newest member, Michelle Barron. Uh, with her experience at Kenneth Young Center, um, and wide breadth of knowledge in terms of, uh, mental and behavioral health, I think she will be a true asset to this board. Um, I, I, I'm glad today that, you know, there was no one prior to me talking about book banning, 'cause then maybe my conversation would go a little bit differently. But, uh, I, I did wanna say, you know, this is an important moment i- in our nation's history. Um, there is definitely a mental health crisis that is impacting our youth, uh, and we really need to make sure that our teachers, uh, and all, uh, uh, school professionals, um, are, are able to tell what warning signs exist. Um, you know, uh, trauma enforced care is, uh, you know, a topic that is being, uh, more so brought, uh, uh, forward, and I, I, I think it's in our schools where we could really identify, uh, individuals who are really struggling. And, you know, I, I had a teacher when I, uh, was going, uh, through elementary school who recognized that I was struggling and made sure that I, I had access to the school counselor, and I was incredibly thankful for that. And, um, you know, I, I know that we're incredibly fortunate in 211 that we do have mental health professionals in our schools and that access is here. Not every high school district has that type of access. Uh, but the recent statistics out there, uh, about our youth, uh, are incredibly worrisome. And, you know, I know I don't wanna talk much about, uh, book banning, and I hope this board never has to, uh, uh, you know, see too many members of, of our community trying to do that. I, I think, uh, there are dark times in history when topics of book burning occur, but, uh, a lot of those topics, uh, are around homophobia and transphobia. Uh, as the first openly LGBT Cook County Board Commissioner, um, you know, seeing, uh, those type of conversations before our school boards definitely impacted me. Uh, but as someone who, you know, has had therapy and, you know, takes my mental health very seriously, uh, I was able to get by. But it is truly our youth who are the most impacted by hearing those words of hate and divisiveness. Um, it is truly important, a- as a public school, as a public entity who is meant to serve the public, that we are providing affirm- affirming education for our incredibly diverse populations. Now, some of the statistic, statistics that I did wanna mention, uh, are the fact that when it comes to our LGBTQ youth, um, LGBTQ youth, one in four, uh, attempted suicide last year alone. Uh, when it comes to the trans population, one out of two seriously considered suicide in the last year. And, uh, separate from the LGBTQ community going, uh, to our, our young girls, uh, it was a, a study by the CDC looking at high school, uh, girls. Uh, and it found that thirty percent had seriously considered suicide in the last year. Uh, those are shocking numbers. Thirteen percent had experienced, uh, sexual assault. Um, and so there are youth wi- in our schools who are dealing with trauma and significant trauma, and also, uh, potentially having...
You have one minute remaining.
...truly negative thoughts, and making sure that we could do whatever we can to make sure that those struggling students receive the resources they need is only gonna be, be better our community moving forward. And so I, I thank you all for allowing me to speak to you tonight. Uh, my office is in Schaumburg. I, I, I wanna be an asset to you, that, and any way the county could be, uh, supportive of District Two of Love, and I want you to ma- make sure that you know, please never hesitate to reach out. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of our speakers this evening. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda, there are no presentations for, um, this evening. The next item on the agenda is our consent agenda items. Is there an item that a board member would like to have pulled? Okay, if not, uh, the recommended action is that the consent agenda be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
All right, then that takes us to the, um, let's see, am I missing one here? That takes us to special reports and communications. Any questions? Um, we've got the Freedom of Information Act requests. The next item is unfinished business. There is no unfinished business to come before the board. That takes us to new board business, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education meet with an IASB field services representative to discuss self-evaluation, practices and procedures, and professional ethics of the Board of Education at an upcoming board meeting during closed session, and agree to pay the four hundred dollar fee for the service. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Barron?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. The next item is potential topics for future discussion. Okay, that will then take us to our committee reports. I do not have an NSSO report. That will lead to the education, EdRed. Mr. Rosenbloom?
Sorry, it seemed to have come so, so quickly on the agenda. Okay, um, all right, so, um, a couple things. Several bills are being considered, uh, in Springfield this week. It's been quite active down there. Um, a couple of those that I thought I would make mention and bring to the attention of our community and this board. Um, one is to change tenure for student, for teachers from four years to three years. So that's one bill that's going, uh, being discussed down there. Another one is to have tenured teachers required to resign more than thirty days prior to the start of school, so that it doesn't put school districts in a, in a crunch and in a bind. Uh, and if they do, then the bill would recommend, would have the school district recommend those teachers to the state superintendent for license revocation. So they're trying to prevent that from happening. Another one is to mandate teaching of Native American history in schools. Another one is to require training, um, on student homelessness to staff in our schools. And another one is to reduce the years of residency for alternative teaching licenses by allowing teachers with students in the schools to attend those schools tuition-free. I guess right now, if a teacher is new to the community, um, from, from, uh, another, another area, that their students are not yet classified as residents in that school district, so they have to pay for their education. Um, upcoming programs, there's a legislative conversation with Senator Ram Vela Vellim on May first. And, um, I, so, um, I attended a meeting of EdRed on the fourteenth, and the guest speaker was our very own Michelle Musman, who gave a legislative update to the members that were there. This morning, I attended a webinar put on by an attorney group on, um, purchasing and construction, and, uh, they shared a couple things. One was... One was, um, around facilities, um, bidding, how to avoid pitfalls, um, for bidding and cooperative purchasing. And they talked about cooperatives, joint governmental purchasing, and proposals and quotes, so I found that quite interesting. A lot of it was bills and acts and, and procedures, and then the other was preventing your construction projects from turning sour and what to do if problems arise. So it was very informative. There were several school districts and, uh, and college districts, community colleges, public education, private education. It was really an assortment of different types of, uh, library districts, so a lot of different people on there. And what I plan to do, once we have identified the facilities liaison, um, from this board, I will share more information because I have a copy of all the slides and the presentations that were delivered today. So that's my EdRed update.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenbloom. All right, that takes us to community and family services report. Mr. Dombrowski or Mr. McGowan?
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
I didn't intend.
All right, thank you. Um, next is the facilities and building safety report. Mr. Bradley?
Um, yes, I do have something. So I met with a group of individuals, um, with the help of Mr. Hildebrand. He did a great job organizing that. Initially, we were gonna meet for one day, however, uh, there are some concerned, uh, parents there with a lot of, uh, questions and some issues, so we challenged them to come back for a second, uh, meeting with solutions, you know? We're in a business of where we need to find solutions and not create more problems. And so together, if we can come up with solutions, we can make this a more, uh, a better district for our kids. Uh, so some of the highlights were, um, we pretty much had every SRO attend one or at least both sessions, and they did a fantastic job in explaining what their roles are on a daily basis. Who would've knew that they had so many roles in our schools and what they do for our children, um, uh, just from, uh, being a partner, a friend, a mentor, providing safety throughout the building. We also had a very nice open dialogue with one another, and, and in fact, uh, if we have more of those in the future, uh, any of you that like to attend board meetings, then you will love these meetings because it's an open dialogue, so I get to speak back and get to voice my opinion. Um, and then we also were able to address some of the vaping concerns at some of the schools. So there's a lot more to come. A lot of it, we can't talk about tonight, however, just be reassured that there's a lot more to come in our school district and our kids' safety is our number one, um, our number one, um, thing we're working on for them. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Bradley. All right, next is the Illinois Association of School Boards report. Mr. Rosenbloom?
All right, so, uh, from ISB, um, on the, on the seventeenth of May, there's a new members webinar being held. Um, it's called Welcome to School Board Members. Um, and, um, and there was also an earlier one that's available online, so once our new member has access to the ISB website as a member district, um, she will have that. Also, um, the board members have received a handout today on resolutions. It's called Resolutions Information. I wanted to share this with you because as a member school district, um, resolution applications and suggestions are now being accepted by ISB for the 2023 Delegate Assembly, which is usually held at the Triple I Conference the weekend before Thanksgiving. The deadline for resolutions from any member district is June twenty-second. So if there's any board member who has a possible resolution of interest, I ask that you please let me know. Um, also, keep in mind that our, our president, Anna Klim Kowitsz, is Resolutions Chair for our, our division of ISB, and she is also a very, very strong information and, uh, information knowledgeable person and resource for us regarding resolutions. So if there's anything that you can think of that you would like, um, please let me know. Um, Mrs. Klim Kowitsz, do you have anything to add regarding this?
I, I would just add, thank you very much for bringing this up because this is really important because our position statements, the resolutions go to our position statements, and then that is what the lobbyists for IASB and how they support us as our school board and other school boards throughout the state of Illinois. They have adopted the core values, and I would strongly encourage you, take a look through the position statement booklets that you have. Ms. Barron's will have to make sure that you get one, so you could take a look through it. And if there's something that you think we need to work on or something that you think is, is missing that we as a board could submit as a resolution, you know, please get back to Mr. Rosenbloom and let's see if we can possibly work on something. Uh, and maybe if someone has some thoughts, we can talk about it at, well, at our May meetings. We have two meetings coming up in May. So thank you for bringing that up.
That's it for me. Thank you.
All right. That takes us then to, uh, our student wellness report, and Ms. Cavill or Mr. McGowan?
Student Wellness Meeting was last week. So two years running the Student Wellness Committee, we're pretty much at, uh, a place where we're branching out and kind, trying to share these ideas and all these successes we've had between individual schools. So for example, like Conan has a super-strong sense of community at Conan versus Schaumburg has extreme participation and strong participation. So all these things have been examined and applied, and we're focusing now on, uh, broadening those, the, the area of focus. Uh, one of my favorite being nutrition is being brought to the conversation now, uh, actually having, uh, admin to work with food services, taking student input for what they would like to eat, something I think is just revolutionary at this point. Um, updates to, uh, classic terminology, see something, say something is something we've all kinda heard before in our lives, but they've taken it and it's see something, say something, so we can do something, so we can have to let the students know the reason we tell them to say something. So it's just a lot of, uh, just in-depth, more into stress, more into stress relief. Every school kinda has their own focus. Uh, Fremd with their stress kits, uh, time management handouts, it's just, um, a lot of work, a lot of, over the past, the course of the last two years, but that's a general update. Nutrition's big, though, for me.
All right. Mr. McGowan, Ms. Cavill, thank you so much for being part of that program, that could, um, student wellness. That's absolutely terrific, and thank you for, for sharing.
My pleasure.
Before we close, just, just very quickly, um, we have agenda item, excuse me, uh, announcements. There's graduations that are gonna be coming up. Uh, we've got our May eleventh board meeting, and then we have a May twenty-fifth board meeting. The last day of the school year is May twenty-sixth, so there's gonna be a lot going on. Before we end, I would just like to comment about the young ladies that were here that came in first place for the mental health promotion. I had an opportunity to talk with them for just a few minutes because they got first place. I wanted to find out what they were working on. And the young ladies said that they were working on bringing about awareness, um, about anxiety and about anxiety disorders, uh, with teenagers, and that they're doing things at the school to bring about awareness. And kids are gonna listen to kids more so than they're gonna listen to their own parents or, or other adults. So I think that that's an amazing group of, of young people that we saw today. Um, and I did ask the teacher if they've got any thoughts or suggestions that they please, you know, share them with Dr. Small and see how we can implement that and maybe with some of the other schools. So just truly impressed with all of our young ladies. All right, so with that, um, there's no other business to come before this Board of Education, and I call this meeting then adjourned at eight-thirty-seven PM.